Good evening, Yorktown, and welcome to the Town Board meeting for Tuesday, November 15th, 2022. Everyone could please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can all take a moment of prayer, and tonight we want to keep in our thoughts and our prayers, especially our veterans. We just celebrated Veterans Day, and we're reminded that we are the land of the free because of the brave, because of those men and women courageous enough to wear a uniform representing our country, representing the beacon of hope. And so tonight, we send a heartfelt thanks and prayer to all of our veterans who have served this country, defended our freedom, and to all those who are currently serving. We pray a safe return home to their families and friends. Thank you.
Amen.
Oh, my goodness.
We'll start with introductions. To my right...
Good evening, Diana Quas, Town Clerk.
Good evening, Tom Diana, Deputy Supervisor.
Matt Slater, Town Supervisor.
Councilman Ed Lachterman.
Sergio Esposito, Councilman.
Luciana Howitt, Councilwoman.
Adam Rodriguez via Zoom, and our Highway Superintendent Dave Paganelle sends his best, and he is getting ready for the first fall of snow. I know, we can't say too loudly, but he's out there already getting ready for some snow later tonight. Again, I want to start with our veterans. We had a great Veterans Day, a whole weekend of Veterans Day celebrations. To all those who have served our country, worn the uniform, we can't thank you enough. We unveiled the Global War on Terrorism monument here at Patriot Park on 11/11 at 11:00, and we had quite the turnout there. And again, we want to recognize and thank those who have served in the Global War on Terror. We have one with us in the back of the room, Mike Tillis Strand, who serves in the Yorktown Police Department, proudly has served our country, and we acknowledge and thank him for his service, as well as all those who have protected our freedoms. We have a couple of announcements town-related. The Water Department has completed its first cement-relining project of Strawberry Road, which is fantastic. The County Department of Health just yesterday approved the use of the water main, and so all those temporary lines, perfect timing with the cold weather now upon us. Temporary lines have been discarded, and the water main is back in use. So that's going to enhance fire protection, it's going to enhance water quality for the residents on Strawberry Road, and it's a great first step. Our next step will be Hanover Road next year. And so we want to thank the Water Department and our partners who made that possible. As a reminder, the Water Department is also doing their townwide leak detection process that they do every year, so they're working on that as we speak. We have an update on the fluoride project. We are inching closer and closer. All the equipment is now operational, and we will be awaiting the Westchester County Department of Health's final green light so that we can notify residents when fluoride will be in our drinking water. We expect that to be sometime next month. And I know that Councilman Diana is going to touch upon this during his report, but if you are here, then you know, but if you aren't here, please excuse our appearance as the front of Town Hall construction is underway. Councilman Diana will provide more details on that, since that's one of the projects that he's been working on. The library, we are happy to report, has finalized its 2021 construction grant. It's a $122,000 matching grant. That's going to allow us to upgrade the elevator at the John C. Hart Memorial Library. They've already completed a full rewiring of their network throughout the library. They've been making some great enhancements over at John C. Hart. And if you didn't get a chance to, I just got to say, the haunted house that they put on was so much fun. They had over 1,500 people stop into the John C. Hart Memorial Library the weekend of Halloween. It was a youth-led effort, and they did a terrific job. My kids actually went twice, both on Friday and on Sunday. So a great job by the John C. Hart Memorial Library. Again, a special thank you to Yvonne Scheck and the entire staff out there. Our Parks Department is happy to report that the Hanover East Playground is nearing completion. We expect to be cutting a ribbon on that in the first two weeks of December, so we're very excited to see that. Finally, we did a great job there. The Parks Department continuing to do a great job making sure that we have safe playgrounds for all of our kids, and so we're happy to see that renovation completed. And then also, fun news for the Yorktown Theater, the Yorktown Stage. Not only is Cinderella going to be starting this weekend, which everyone should get tickets to, but the new seats over at the theater are scheduled to be installed beginning January 4th. And so we're really excited about that and appreciate everyone's efforts to make that come to fruition. Lastly, I just want to make a plug for the interfaith Thanksgiving service. It is going to be this Sunday at 4:00 PM at Temple Beth Am, right in the Heights. I've attended this in years past, and it really is a wonderful community celebration, a great way to kick off your Thanksgiving week. And I really want to encourage, if you can come and you're comfortable attending, please come out. It's a great interfaith Thanksgiving service. And it really, like I said, it just makes you proud to be here in Yorktown, and it really touches your soul. So I hope to see everybody out there. I know I'm going to be there. Again, that's this Sunday at 4:00 PM at Temple Beth Am, right here in the Heights. We want to thank Rabbi Robbie for hosting this great ceremony. With that, I do want to just give one last plug to all the candidates who ran this past election. It's not about whether you won or you lost. Anyone who puts their name on the ballot really deserves a round of applause and a total real respect, because it takes a lot of guts to put your name on the ballot. It takes a lot of guts to go out there in the community and engage in these campaigns. And so for every candidate, regardless of party, regardless of outcome, I just want to thank everyone for their great efforts during this campaign process. Really appreciate you keeping democracy alive for all of us. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our Councilman Tom Diana for his report.
Thank you, Supervisor. Happy belated Veterans Day to all our veterans out there. A little recap on the front of the building. As you see, it kind of looks like it did about a year ago when we pulled the tank, but it's improving. We got to the front, and it's going to be laid out with new steps and so on and so forth. They're making great progress. There's going to be a handicap ramp, not only on the right side of the building, but there's going to be one on the front as well. So it's going to be a really attractive addition to our wonderful Town Hall here in the town of Yorktown. We don't have a scheduled date of reopening yet, but stay tuned. We will be coming up with that.
It's going to be predicated on the weather?
All predicated on the weather at this point in time, but they're moving forward even though the weather is a bit chilly out there. With regard to what the supervisor said with the water pipe relining on Strawberry Road, they are breaking down as we speak. Be careful out there tonight if you're transversing over Strawberry Road and Lexington Avenue, because they are flushing the hydrants and flushing the lines. That all has to do with the Board of Health approvals and so on and so forth. So there is some standing water there. I was just on the phone with the Highway Superintendent, who's going to take a ride out there a little later to see if there is any salting necessary or anything like that with the drop in the, possible drop in the temperatures. December 10th will be the first annual Christmas tree lighting at the library. 6:30 PM on December 10th with a rain date of the 11th. We hope we don't have rain. It might be kind of neat if it was snowing on the day that we light it. So there's going to be some activities prior to that Yvonne is working on, and we'll have a little bit further updated our next meeting on what the activities will be for the children, making ornaments and so forth, and hanging them on the tree in the library. So it should be a lot of fun. We're trying to get some of the area businesses involved at Hot Chocolate and maybe some Carolers and so on and so forth, so it'll be a good evening out for the family. This is in addition to, to be clear, this is in addition to the Electric Light Parade.
Which is the week before.
Right, which is the week before, okay? This is, come to one, come to both, but come and have fun. Maybe people from the north side can't get over to the south side for whatever reason, so now they have one in their backyard. So that's that. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilman Lachterman.
Sure. Let me try to put it in order, since I'm all over the place on days. This Wednesday, the Veterans Advisory Committee will be meeting. We have a new spot. It'll be at the Albert A. Capellini Community and Cultural Center, Room 104, which is on the middle floor, not on the bottom. That starts at 7:00 PM, and it is always the third Wednesday of the month. On Thursday, the Yorktown Lions will be collecting turkeys for local families in need and St. Mary's Food Bank. They will be set up at the gazebo from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. If anyone wanted to make a donation to any of the food banks via turkey or any other supplies, you could drop it there, and then we will get it over to the appropriate places. On Friday, Senior Advisory Committee, 1:00 PM, right here in the Town Boardroom. We will have a guest speaker talking about the different veteran associations in the area, so please try to make it if you can. I believe lunch is usually served as well, which is nice, sponsored by New York Presbyterian Hospital. And last thing, on a pretty busy week, the Sons of the American Legion will be having their fundraiser breakfast this Sunday from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the American Legion Hall on Veterans Road. I believe it's $10 for an adult, five for a child, and children under two or two and under are free. And that's a really great, great little breakfast, especially for the price, and you're able to help the veteran services, as all of that money that is made ends up going to either the Post or other veteran groups in the town. That's it for me.
Ed, will there be any special aperitif?
Well, actually, I believe that Chef Rob will be there today, or this week, and he's going to be making a soda bread French toast.
Ooh, see?
So that should be pretty good.
Aperitif.
We'll leave it alone. There will, of course, be two types of eggs, pancakes, potatoes, corned beef hash, sausage, and bacon. It's a nice breakfast.
Very nice.
Very good. Councilman Esposito.
So we had some, an exciting few weeks. We had our Halloween parade with the Lions. It was a wonderful celebration. Our haunted house here, that was here, is gone. A little unknown fact is, the NFL actually came up and did some video for that, the 31st, for that Sunday, and they shot the film in the haunted house right here in Yorktown. So we got national attention with that, so that's pretty cool. We had a renewal of vows at the Nutrition Center. Steve and Linda Ardey?
That's right.
Right? What, how many years?
Fifty years.
Fifty years.
Fifty years, and they renewed their vows. I wonder if they were wondering if they were both going to say yes again. So...
If they made it to 50, it's pretty much in the books.
We had really, really exciting times with our budget hearings, so we'll have our very exhilarating conversations there. And we'll have our public hearing for our budget next week. When is it? December?
December 6th.
December 6th, thank you, Ed. We had, really, really proud of the way we celebrated Veterans Day. We had a Veterans Day ceremony at Patriot Park, where, as the supervisor stated, we unveiled the Global War on Terror monument. We had Veterans Day ceremony at Trump Park. We had, that was held by Deborah Marks. We had a Veterans Day ceremony at Jefferson Village. And we had just really an outstanding Veterans Day parade in Shrub Oak. On the horizon, we have, on November 27th, there will be a grand opening and ribbon cutting at Common Grounds. That's in Jefferson Valley, right next to A&amp;S Pork Store. There are going to be a coffee shop. They're going to have live music. It's going to actually be something different and something I think Yorktown desperately needs. So the atmosphere and the ambiance is going to be, it's going to be more than just a coffee shop, right? And they're going to have great coffee. I wanted to just give a shout out to Nadine's. As you know, we have our covert project going on there, and I can only imagine that they've suffered business-wise. So if you guys could get out there and give them a shot in the arm, support them, support the locals. You know, I think they could probably use it, because pretty much all access to it has been not cut off, and the Highway Department has done a fantastic job of keeping them open and accessible. So shout out to Dave. But if we could all get out there and support the local businesses, that would be great. I think they could use a little help. And they got great food and great beer, and I believe Yorktown has it all for fall. They have a combination fall dinner, fall meal, and paired with a fall beverage, alcoholic beverage. So we'll be posting something like that. I'm hearing rumblings of a Bobos coming to town. It's not officially official, but it's unofficially official, so that's pretty exciting. And on November 20th, a group that's dear to my heart, the Yorktown Chamber of Commerce, is having a wines-giving event at, where is that? That's right here.
Suburban.
Suburban. Suburban Wines, and basically, Suburban Wine's great community partner. They are donating 10% to 20% of any of their sales toward another event that's dear to my heart, the Yorktown Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Awards Fund. So the money will go there. You'll get some, you'll be able to stock your shelves for the holidays. So another great event, and I hope you guys can get there and support them. All right, thank you.
Actually, real quickly, just a shout out to Paul Martin on that parade. Fantastic job.
Excellent.
Yeah, he always does a great job with it. If you're also interested in helping a local business, Papoose's Greek Kitchen.
Yep.
Had a car go through their dining room last week up from Chase. They have been approved to stay open for takeout. I don't know if they're open yet for dining, but they have some terrific food. They could do some takeout in, so please, please go and support them as well. And finally, the Chamber of Commerce has moved. They now have an office at the Jefferson Valley Mall. So if you want to, if you're at the mall and want to stop in, they're on the, I think they're in the old Chocolateer Shop down by Macy's on the ground floor.
And they had, I wasn't there, but they had a great event where they had a meeting space event. They kind of had a ribbon cutting for their new office, which I thought was pretty cool.
And outside, they did a Monte Carlo theme, and they had John Iorio from Fun Time Amusement set up some like blackjack, roulette, and craps, of course, all with fake money. And it was a really nice time, and they have an art exhibit inside the office, and all of the art is available for purchase.
That's great.
So some really, really good things there.
Just going back to Papoose, I spoke to Rui just to see if he needed anything, how we can help, and he told me a story that it was a gentleman that took his newborn, I think the newborn's about eight months. Don't quote me on the facts, but this is kind of general. And it was the first time they decided to take him out, the baby, and they were going to sit right where the car came through, and the waitress insisted that they sit across, because she felt that that was a better spot for them, and the high chair was there and everything like that. Rui said that the guy came in crying shortly thereafter, and was very thankful. So thank God, right?
And nobody was hurt?
Nobody was hurt.
In that accident, thank God.
Luch. Amen. Okay, so since my fellow boardsmen said a lot about this, I'll just wrap it up on, we have now entered our fourth decade of our war against roadside litter. So the Great Fall Litter Cleanup is going to take place on November 19th. It starts, I think, if I don't believe it, at the Triangle Shopping Center.
Well, it depends on each group.
It depends, and then there's some at the Mohegan, the Lake. So let's find out what your closest location is, and then grab your grabbers and bring your kids and help us pick it up before the snow, which is happening right now, covers it up. So we're going to pick it up first, and that's all.
And they can call the Refuge and Recycling Department to see if there's a group nearby. The Refuge and Recycling Department coordinating all those groups throughout town.
I can tell you, the Yorktown Lions do the road by the post office every year, behind TJ, not TJ Maxx, is it? Yeah, TJ Maxx. So we start up there, go all the way down on the mall side of Brookside. And you're more than welcome to help us. We start at 9:00 AM.
Great. As I said, our Highway Superintendent out already, dealing with the potential of snow, but I just also wanted to really give him a big thanks, because he's been dealing with the DOT covert closure that Sergio had mentioned, Councilman Esposito. We did receive word from DOT, and I think they owe our Highway Superintendent on a bet, but that unfortunately has been extended to the beginning of December now. I think, believe it's the first week of December when they, at this point, expect to reopen the road in its entirety. But our Highway Superintendent has worked very, very hard. Our whole Highway Department has worked hard dealing with the cut-through traffic and the detours, and just trying to keep everyone safe over there. So a big, big thank you to our Highway Superintendent for his work there, and we hope the DOT is able to get that road open ASAP. And with that, we'll turn it over to our poet laureate, John McMullen.
Just before we go, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make an announcement.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to give our supervisor a special shout out. He just enlisted in the Navy, in the Navy Reserve, so congratulations and great job. Thank you for serving our country.
You're really the future of the leading.
Yeah, you won't stop.
I got you.
Sir, all yours.
Ken, I wanted to formally congratulate Matt on his election in the Assembly, and to point out that even though he had 61% of the votes, it was probably my endorsement to put him over the top.
Absolutely.
Okay, speaking of elections, the people have spoken. The election is over. The pundits were wrong. There was no red way, but the Republicans have taken some supposedly safe Democratic seats, such as my district. The concession speech by the outgoing Congressman Sean Patrick Maloney was gracious. The post-election speech by my Congressman-elect, Republican Matt Lawler, has been inclusive, speaking of reaching across the aisle and hard work for all, even for those to vote against him and disagree with him politically. Are we returning to the age of civility, where elected officials can separate policy disagreements from personal disparagements? Maybe, maybe. Maybe you can all start here. My God, I hope so.
Me too.
Thanks, John. All right, personnel, we're going to appoint Thomas Fonti to the position of Park Groundskeeper in the Parks and Recreation Department. We're going to appoint Nicholas Titka to Motor Equipment Operator in the Highway Department. And we're going to appoint Brianna Margie to Contingent Permanent Office Assistant Auto Systems in the Building Department.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And he posed. All right, with that, we will go to Courtesy of the Floor. As a reminder, you can always contact us. You don't have to wait till Courtesy of the Floor. You can always contact Town Hall, our town officials, our town departments. We are here to work for you. You can visit the town's website at www.yorktownny.org. You can find all the contact information from everybody here on the dais, the Town Clerk, even the Town Attorney, and of course, your elected officials. As a reminder, there's a three-minute time limit on your comments for Courtesy of the Floor. We ask that you keep them directed to the Town Board, and we also ask, as always, that your comments remain focused and respectful. And with that, anyone who would like to speak at Courtesy of the Floor? Just come on up.
Hi, good evening, Susan Segal. I'm here tonight to ask for your board's help, resolving an issue that I believe is important to all the residents of Yorktown, and that's compliance with the Freedom of Information law, shortened to just as FOIL, okay? Specifically, I'm asking your board to do what it can to get the town's FOIL Appeals Committee to do its job and respond to an appeal that I filed in September. Yes, September, and I'm still waiting for a response on a fairly straightforward request for a document. Let me explain. On June 7th, at a televised Town Board meeting, the outside consultant that your board hired to investigate the leak of an Ethics Board decision, the attorney reported his findings, and he also discussed some of the recommendations for changes in the ethics law. The following day, I foiled for a copy of the attorney's report. Two months later, in August, my request was denied on the grounds that it was exempt from FOIL because it fell under the attorney-client privilege exemption. So following town procedures, in September, I filed an appeal of the denial. My position was simple. If, since the contents of the report had been discussed at a public meeting, how could it still be considered confidential? Since I submitted the appeal, I've sent two follow-up letters to the Appeals Committee asking for the status of my appeal. I've received no responses. I know that the Town Board has no authority over the Appeals Committee, but I would hope that as members of the Town Board, you see it as part of your responsibility and your job description to make sure that official town committees made up of town staff are doing their job, okay? Why have an Appeals Committee if the committee doesn't respond to its appeals requests? And finally, one more question. In the 18 months since we've all become painfully aware of the fact that the Town Board can silence our Ethics Board, what, if anything, have you done to update the Ethics Board and the ethics law so we have a real and meaningful Ethics Board and law? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Segal. Next?
Good evening, James Mekka, Yorktown. First of all, congratulations to Matt for being voted to the Assembly and also for being named an Ensign in the United States Navy. I was privileged to be on the honor flight on November 5th, and I would like to thank Ed and his wife for driving me down there early in the morning. And I would also like to thank Don and Sue King for picking me up, and also for fellow veteran Tom Brady for being one of the veterans to see us off. And a special thanks to the Town Council for your certificate of appreciation for me going on the honor flight. Now I want to talk about the Korean War Veterans Appreciation Day. It looks like it will be approved on April 26th. A few weeks ago, the group I'm in met with Andrea Stewart-Cousins in her office in the Ankers, along with Shelley Mayer, and they are 100% behind us. I also told them that Yorktown was the first city in town to get behind us. So this shall be a go, and I would find it hard to fathom that even two people would be against honoring our Korean War heroes. To all those who served in the Korean War, your day of honor, although long overlooked, is going to be finally here on April 26th. Your forgotten heroes of a forgotten war will be forgotten no more. America thanks you for your service. In closing, I would like to say once again, congratulations to Ensign Slater, and thank you to the Town Council for all your hard work that you do for our veterans. Thank you, and God bless America.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Anyone else for Courtesy?
Anthony Pichette. Yes, congratulations to you, Supervisor. I feel like I'm a broken record, but I'm here to kind of comment and talk about the traffic situation that we talked about. I saw the announcement of the budget at the police station. I was watching that. And it's, it was, it's kind of tough, because I saw what the announcement was about adding a police officer, and no one's going to say not to add a police officer, just to put that up front. I'm just wondering if that money, first of all, if you could explain, and if it's not at this time, if you can explain it at the budget meeting or the, you know, next time, what that, I think it was a $680,000 increase. I think that's what you said, close to that, but I wonder if you could explain what that was for. Also, I'm wondering if there is an option, once again, I'm new, so I don't know exactly how the process works, but there's an option to offer up suggestions on other ways to help with discussing the traffic situation, like an advertising campaign, like you did for the bullying. I keep looking at you only, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. It's all right.
Because you're looking at me, so...
It's okay.
So, you know, is it, you know, I wonder if there are other, there are ways... So, you know, is it, you know, I wonder if there are other, there are a way to discuss other ideas that could possibly be used, not with that money, but a portion of the budget in the discussions coming up. I also wanted to comment because I was going down a rabbit hole, looking at old videos. Councilman Esposito, you spoke about something in the debate. Yes, I was watching the debate before. And you spoke about shuttles back and forth to different, to train stations that would help decrease the traffic, decrease the amount of people driving, and make the streets safer in that way as well. Because you take cars off the road, make people go a different way, that's also going to make it safer, obviously. And you were very excited about it, and I was excited about it too, because it was nice to hear. So, yeah, I think that that's really all I have to say about that. I just was wondering, like I said, I just, I don't want to negate, go against where you're putting that money. I'm just wondering if there's options or a time to have a discussion about additional options, part of that going somewhere else. That's it. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Dad.
Thank you. Anyone else for Courtesy of the Floor? Sarah?
Good evening, Sarah Wilson, 33-year resident of Yorktown. Thank you for mentioning the Yorktown Interfaith Thanksgiving Service, which is a great annual tradition that rotates from, you know, one house of faith to another around town. So I'll be there on Sunday as well. And I just wanted to point out another way that our residents can observe Thanksgiving. At 7:30 next Wednesday, our residents are invited to join us at Grace Lutheran Church on Thanksgiving Eve for a bluegrass worship service. So something a little different, hopefully get you feeling up and lively and stimulating. It's a way to center yourself before the holidays, give thanks for the many blessings that we've received this year. And Grace's Bluegrass Band will lead us in traditional songs that'll be interspersed with passages, all sorts of passages from the Bible, from poets, from authors, from historians, and thinkers on the topic of Thanksgiving and giving thanks. Best of all, you don't need to bring anything, just bring yourself to the great Thanksgiving at the Lord's Table where communion will be served. Refreshments afterward and offerings at that service will all go to benefit victims of this past summer's massive flooding in West Virginia, Tennessee, and Kentucky. The waters have receded, but unfortunately, the pain and the work to rebuild people's homes continues. So we hope to have a decent amount of fundraising going on for that. So just want to let people know about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else for Courtesy of the Floor?
Motion to closer, Courtesy of the Floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the board?
Yeah, I mean, I'll address Anthony about the shuttling. Yeah, it's kind of an out-of-the-box kind of approach, because I think Yorktown is actually in a perfect place. We're in between both major train stations, Bedford and Croton-Harmon. And the idea was that if we had shuttle buses, it would not only, the shuttle buses would, of course, in my mind, be electric, because the distance traveling is well within the range of an electric vehicle. So that works. I was actually thinking about it initially as an amenity that a lot of these developments might be able to provide their residents. Although with the idea or intention that it may expand. What I did uncover is that in the eighties, we actually did have a shuttle bus, stopped right here in front of Town Hall. Tony Graffel told me about it. I never knew that. I don't know why that went away. But in my mind, I think it's a way to attract a younger demographic, although working from home has kind of stifled that a little bit. But what I was imagining is that in the morning, you get up, you get on your, in your shuttle from wherever you're living as an amenity, you might pay for it, I don't know. And what it would do is it'd probably take you about 20 minutes to get to Croton-Harmon, where they would pull up right in front of the train station. You'd get out, you'd walk upstairs. You don't got to spend hours looking for a parking spot and being facetious. It's not hours, but it's about, it's quite a while. And the spot you'll find is always a mile away, and you're walking through the rain if it's cold that day, or it's snow, or whatever. So I think it would be actually a convenience thing as well. And if it's marketed right, it could potentially bring in a younger demographic that travels to the city, or that, or people that just don't want vehicles. Same thing with Bedford. So in my mind, you get up, take a shower, you get ready for work, you go downstairs, you get on your shuttle bus. Twenty minutes later, whisk you right to the train station, you get out, you go upstairs, you get on the train, and you come back, when you come back, it's the same thing. Possibly on the weekends, if you had shuttle service then, you could take a shuttle bus to, let's say you wanted to go up to Cold Spring. I love going up to Cold Spring, it's a great place, right? Shuttle bus take you to the train, couple stops up, you're in Cold Spring, you come back down, get on your shuttle bus, come back. It's, I think it's an out-of-the-box, out-of-the-box approach. The implementation is another thing. Pragmatically, it would be great. And like I said, I was envisioning it starting with, as an amenity to somebody's larger developments that seem to be coming in. So that was the idea, just a different, a different thought process, a different idea, opening up a different kind of image that Yorktown could project. John, you had something?
No, 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 I'm not taking any comments. Anyone else on the?
Well, I just wanted to say, there was a comment thrown out there that the Town Board could stifle the Ethics Committee. And I just want to clear the air, because this whole thing with the investigation started, because before we were able to put out the results of the Ethics Board and their findings, it was leaked and put out before we even had a meeting. So, you know, a little disingenuous in the comment thrown out, the way it was especially. So I just want to clear the air on that and make that point of view.
Yep. Anything on your end?
I'm going to address traffic safety. The committee and I are still working on a lot of the areas. And with the increased police officer dedicated to traffic safety, it's going to give us a much wider coverage, a much broader timeframe in which the coverages can be had. Speaking with the chief in the past, a lot of the uncommitted time that the officers do have, they do spend doing traffic safety in different areas, but there's a lot of roads, so they can't be on every road every day. But they try to get out to where the problem areas are, and they have a, for lack of a better word at this point, a hot sheet that directs them to those particular areas. So, you know, a lot of this stuff is being taken care of, and we're working on, you know, our problem spots as we speak.
Yeah, thank you.
And I had to add one more thing, and I know we were talking about the Interfaith Council's Thanksgiving Dinner. Just to remind again, as, you know, we spoke about the Lions, but there is another food drive happening in town. Burger King from, they started November 1st through the 15th of December, are collecting canned foods for the local food pantries. In particular, they are trying to support the Yorktown Community Food Bank. And they are also doing a dine-out and donate from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Saturday, December 3rd, where they, I'm sorry, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., where they will be donating 20% of their sales to the Yorktown Community Care's Food Bank. And that's right here at the Burger King in the Kmart Plaza.
That's the same net as the Electric Parade, so it's a great way for us to...
Right, so if you're going to the parade, you could grab some quick Burger King on your way over there and help support the food pantry.
Matt, I got one more thing too. So Anthony, just to take it to the next step, I like the idea of a campaign, you know, to slow people down. When I was president of the chamber and I managed the LED sign, I would always put up one of those, give them a break, you know, give our highway workers a break, and we would always publicize that on the sign, especially there's like a time period where, you know, there's a campaign that goes on nationally. So, yeah, I mean, if you wanted to work with me on putting together some kind of a campaign, I would be happy to do that. And I know that when there's a complaint, and I get this from constituents, you know, the police get there, because they take it very seriously. And when they get there, everything slows down, and the minute that they leave, and, you know, it's unreasonable that they could be there 24/7, right? I mean, we all understand that. And we listen to everybody's concerns, and that's why, you know, that led to us hiring an additional traffic safety, you know, because we do listen to what everybody's saying, and we do want to keep everybody safe. But it's kind of like you're chasing your tail a lot of times with that. So it's unfortunate, but if you want to work together on a campaign, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. I just, I want to just thank, Anthony, thank you for coming up again, for wanting to help find a solution as opposed to not. Most people, I feel like, are always looking to tell us what we're doing and what we're not doing, and I like the idea of the collaboration. I think that is a movement that, you know, based even on your poem, John, that we're hoping to move through that civility, where we can all share a breath at the same table. So I love that. As far as the bluegrass, I'm a somatic practitioner, so getting up into your body and dancing and moving is a great way to like, get out of your head and get back in your heart so that you can connect with people over Thanksgiving. So I think that's wonderful. And ultimately, yes, the shuttle, we have a lot of wish lists for Yorktown. We have a lot of wish lists, and I think that Sergio definitely had a vision. And what's nice about visions is, you know, you make a plan and God laughs, but we can keep making plans, and hopefully, little by little, we'll get there and things will start to change, so. Thank you.
Adam, anything you want to add on the FOIL Committee? Mr. Rodriguez?
He said, hold on.
Hi, sorry, the spacebar wasn't unmuting me. Yeah, Miss Siegel can receive a response to the FOIL appeal by the end of the week, which I am confident will address her concerns.
So by the end of the week, you said? Yes. So you should have an answer by the end of the week regarding the appeal. As for the Ethics Code, I've been in touch with the Chair of the Ethics Committee on some suggestions and recommendations to enhance the Ethics Code. When it's ready, we plan on bringing it to the Town Board Work Session for a conversation. Jim, Honor Flight, just one of the best things you can ever do, man. It is, and it killed me that I couldn't be there. I was supposed to be on the flight in the spring, and I got COVID, and then I was a little busy last weekend, so I couldn't come down, but so happy you got to go. And still one of the best days I've ever had, being there with men and women like you, and really celebrating your service. So I hope you enjoyed as much as I did when I went down. And I want to thank Ed for, of course, being out there and helping.
It was a pleasure, even at 5:30 in the morning.
It's worth it. It's, please, it's totally worth it.
Oh, absolutely.
And on Korean War Appreciation Day, you know you can count on me up there fighting for that, all right? So we'll talk. And then don't forget, for you, March 29th, Vietnam Veterans Appreciation Day up there as well. So we're going to keep that alive, started under Terrence Murphy, and has continued. And so we're happy about that. And I think they, I think the board's really spoken about your comments. Of course, there's, you know, you don't have to wait till the Courtesy of the Floor, you can reach out, if you have suggestions or ideas, there's a public hearing for the budget that you can bring more of your suggestions and ideas to. The total number that you were referring to, the number you were referring to is a total increase in the budget that covers a whole, the whole department, right? So it's not just for the one officer. But when you talk to Chief Noble, and you talk about the needs of the department, and, I mean, listen, we hear it here constantly, is the community desire and for greater enforcement, especially when it comes to traffic issues. And hearing that, plus Chief Noble's input, we felt this was a good investment for the town to make in order to make sure that we were keeping our roads as safe as we possibly could. And so, but the number itself is the entire department, not just for the officer. And then, you know, just as an aside, regarding the shuttles, I know that Sergio, Councilman Esposito, has been an advocate for all new developments that are coming in to include shuttles as part of their, as part of their business model, so. And Sarah, I'm sure I will see you over at Grace. I think I'm still the Iron Man, I still hold the Iron Man record for acolyting, altarboying over there, growing up in that church and raising my kids there too. So I appreciate you bringing the Thanksgiving Eve service here. It's a great service. I really encourage everyone to join us there as well. And with that, any other comments?
Yeah, you know, just going back to the Ethics Code, it is time, because the current Ethics Code is just, it's very convoluted, poorly written, and it could use a significant updating, definitely, so.
Like I said, I spoke with Jim Materano, who's the Chair. He had some suggestions. I need to reengage in that conversation, but one ready, we'll bring it back here for a work session discussion.
What time is the service on the eve?
7:30.
7:30.
7:30.
Matt Materano, Sr., by the way. Oh, thank you.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, Sergio, you were going to announce that?
Oh, that's right, the Turkey Trot is...
Thanksgiving morning?
I forgot all about it. Yeah, it's Thanksgiving morning, and it's definitely on. Hold on, I'll get you some...
Starts at Front Street.
Live information. You got info on it? Go ahead.
I do. Well, let me, I'm just going to open up to...
8:30.
Yes, so Turkey Trot, Thursday, November 24th, starting at the, starting on Front Street, running through town. Registration is open. It is runsignup.com is the site, and you look for the Yorktown's annual Turkey Trot. So money raised there goes to local food pantries. I think also United for the Troops is one of their benefactors. So some great things there, and hopefully, it will not be Sub-Zero.
I'll put up the flyer and stuff on my social media so you guys can see it if you're looking for it.
It's not a Turkey Trot, unless it is Sub-Zero.
Yeah. And Matt's run it a few times. My wife and I walked it, and we would have finished dead last, but this 92-year-old woman crossed right after us because she stopped to tie her shoelace.
There you go. All right, we'll move on. We have a Town Board discussion regarding the Par 3 golf course. I want to ask members of the Building Department and Parks Department to come forward. Steve Frieta and John Landy, Jim Materano. We have the Chairman of the Commission, Matt Talbert, with us as well. So Steve, if you can take the podium for us, and I know you led a team on an inspection over at the golf course today, if you can just inform us as to what transpired, we would appreciate it.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Supervisor and Town Board. Yes, I did do an inspection today with three other inspectors, another assistant inspector, code enforcement officer, and the fire inspector. And looking at the violations that were issued back in July, very little progress has been made. There were a couple of them that were remedied, but some of them are still very incomplete. And mainly, what we have here is some, a lot of safety issues. We have a lot of electrical hazards that are still open. And just a note on that, the electrical inspector for the job did pull the electrical certificate that was issued for it already. He pulled it, so they no longer have that.
Why did they do that, Steve?
Because of the violations that were found there after the fact, after the initial...
They altered the work that was there?
We believe it was, but I can't be honest to tell you that. But yes, we believe that it was altered, okay? But at any rate, as we go on with that, so the electrical conditions is still a major issue. We still have bridges that are going through the golf course that are supposed to have railings that were put on it, and as of today, maybe one is partially complete, but there are others that are not even touched. So that's, they're not ready to open the course whatsoever out there. Another violation that was issued, we have people that were living in trailers there, and that is still, actually still going on, and we gave them violation notice for that too, and that is still going on until today. Okay, moving forward, you know, we still have no idea where they stand with the Board of Health, or a grease interceptor that's supposed to be installed, that was installed, and their septic system. So that item has to be resolved. There are still a lot of plumbing issues that were listed on the original violation that have not been resolved. They're still there. But at any rate, as we go on, we did find a lot of other things today that were interesting too. We're not 100% sure, but we, they did install a... We're not a hundred percent sure, but we, they did install a, uh, a washing machine and a dryer on the second floor there that were just not hooked up properly. They don't have no, um, trap on the waistline going out. So all the sewer gas can sneak back up. The dryer vent is not properly installed. It's not in the interior of the building instead of be direct vent to the exterior of the building. Uh, we found some more electrical boxes that were, um, blocked, where they were partially blocked, where you can't access them. Where you're supposed to access them by code. You have to be able to get to these boxes. And they were like partially joint compounded over and you just can't get them, uh, quick enough. Any rate, um, even going further, we have, again, we found electrical, another electrical issues where they just have bare wires with wire nuts on them hanging on the ground, on the ground next to a floor drain. Again, this is unacceptable. They have a lot of work to do. You saw my list. Um, that's for them to achieve a CO. And there are no wheres near it. And I don't anticipate them being anywhere near it soon.
What about the fire inspection issues?
Okay. With the fire inspection, um, with the fire inspector had brought up, there are supposed to be fire extinguishers throughout. And we didn't see any that were inspected recently or, or we don't see any of them really, um, in the building. They should have one at any rate. We didn't see any. The kitchen fire suppression system is not operating yet. Okay? What that is, is an ancil, they call it an ancil system. And because they don't, they don't even have gas yet. So they can't, those items cannot be tested until the gases are hooked up. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues here that, um, that they just need to, uh, resolve before we can give them any CO. There was a fire alarm system. I was bringing that up. They, they never, they never originally applied for a fire alarm permit, but they recently have done so. And when we went today, the alarm company just showed up to work on it. So they have a, a non-functioning fire alarm system there at this point.
Well, this was the first time that they were there since they were given the notice on July 19th.
Yes.
Interesting.
And again, um, out in the parking lot, you know, they have lighting conduit that's coming up. Well, it looks like an electrical conduit now, but we never inspected it because they used, uh, an inappropriate material for the lighting out there. So we need to see what they did underneath the ground. And it's all covered up and just this little conduit line coming out of it. So that needs to be addressed. There are multiple tripping hazards throughout the outside of the building. And what I mean by that, there's, there's like open, um, drainage, um, there's a, open drainage lines that, where you can get in to do cleanouts. And there's no grate on top of it. So anybody can just put their foot near and just, you know, fall. And there's other tripping hazards where they put a new door in at the back. And again, same thing, there's about a three or four inch gap there where anybody can just easily trip over it and, and hurt themselves. So, um, that's not done. I mean, there's just, just, just numerous, numerous violations here.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Actually, I, I found, um, just to clarify, uh, the statewide inspection service. So electrical, we don't inspect per se. That's done through a state inspection service. Uh, on July 12th, they sent a letter to the town saying, uh, that they, uh, rescinded the certificate of completion provided on March 1st because additional work was performed at the, uh, address that was not inspected by Swiss, which may compromise the electrical safety in the building.
Correct.
So.
Okay.
And that's from the President and Owner of Statewide Inspection Services.
Thank you. Appreciate your work. Yeah, just stick around in case we have any questions. Jim, if you could just take to the podium for me, our Parks and Rec Superintendent, can you just give us an update from your standpoint?
Yeah, I just, uh, I, I know you, you all know this already, but September 2014 is when the initial agreement was signed with Rocco and I think Larry was a silent partner at the time. Um, and in August 2018, uh, the first amended contract was signed with Larry as, as a principal on the project. And, uh, right now we're in 2022. It came to our attention that, um, they were working with Wadsworth Golf and Arnold Palmer, uh, to come up with the plans and be on this job. Since 2019, they have not been with Wadsworth Golf, uh, or Arnold Palmer. So.
When did we, when did we find out about that?
Around 2020, I was told that Arnold Palmer is no longer working on this project and, but they're still going to use the blueprints and the plans that Arnold Palmer gave them.
Did we ever hear from Wadsworth?
We've only heard from Wadsworth recently, uh, to kind of give us some of the backstory on what went, what went down with that, uh, kind of that breakup.
Okay.
I, I, I came on the project in, uh, late 2019. Prior to me coming on, uh, there was a, a tree issue, uh, on the project where they didn't ask the town if they could take down multiple trees. Uh, they didn't violate any of the town code at the time. Uh, but you know, just a common courtesy to let the town know that they were going to take those trees down would have been pretty nice, but.
No, I don't think that's correct.
They didn't violate town code at the time.
They didn't, did?
Yeah, there was a tree law at that time. It was passed under Supervisor.
Well, I misspoke. I'm sorry. I guess I did. But I do know that, that law did become more stringent. In, in early 2020, uh, they were cited by the DEC for not performing a SWIP on the project. Uh, there wasn't due diligence on seeing how much work they were going to do and whether or not a SWIP was required. Uh, they just went forward with their maintenance and that maintenance was construction, um, as seen by the DEC.
Jim, ultimately, who was able to, uh, essentially obtain the SWIP?
The SWIP was done in partnership with the town to, to help them out.
You're being modest, Jim.
Yes. Yeah.
Who actually obtained the SWIP?
The, the SWIP was done with me, uh, to, to do that. And we put them through the planning board process around that same time. And I helped them get through that process as well.
Being very modest in your descriptions, aren't you?
You know, that's.
Of your role.
Yes. So, you know, we've had to hold their hand through this process, uh, with both the SWIP and the planning board process, which is not what we probably saw in a partnership, um, or envisioned in a partnership.
Why don't you just, if you can fast forward for us, you know, when, what do you see? Were you, were you there today?
I was there today.
Okay.
Uh, there wasn't much change to the inside, which I told.
I understand the building. Talk to me about the golf course itself.
The golf course itself, uh, they seemed to put down, uh, and finish most of the holes. But that was not truly the task that they were given, you know, two months ago. There, there was, their task was to get everything in place for a CFO. So they, they certainly put down sod, uh, to finish the course. But even that sod is not ready to play on right away because that needs to mature over a couple of seasons. So, you know, even, even with the course, it's going to take a couple of seasons to be able to open and be playable. Even though it looks nice. It does look nice. Irrigation, uh, there is no true plan there yet. They, I know they purchased the piping for the irrigation, but we haven't given, been given any plans of which and, and how they're going to be putting in that irrigation system.
But they put the sod down already.
They did put the sod down, yes.
Put the sod down without putting an irrigation system in?
Currently, that's the case, yes.
But they, but did they purchase the equipment needed?
I believe they have most of the piping onsite, yes.
So we have most of the piping onsite to install an, uh, an in-ground sprinkler system, but we put the sod on first.
Yeah, that, that sounds silly.
I just want to make sure I understand it properly.
So the sod will come up, they'll install the system and then need another four years to open or?
I, I would believe they would only cut, uh, for, for areas where, where it's needed. So I don't think it, uh, affect the whole, whole per, per se. Uh, just only a portion, um, of, of that hole. So, the line in which you're putting in.
A bit backwards.
I, I'm not a golf course expert, uh, but it seems, uh, a little convoluted.
Okay. Anything else you want to add?
That's pretty much, uh, what I had, uh, had written down here.
All right. And as the Parks and Rec Superintendent, uh, what are your thoughts on, on the hope of seeing an operation take place here?
I, I just don't see, uh, with, you know, kind of, kind of the history. And we're talking about eight years now. Um, and even now, they're looking at another year or more, uh, of this place possibly opening. Cause every time there's a different issue, uh, going, moving forward. So, you know, I, I don't see this golf course opening, uh, with this group within the next two years.
Okay.
Realistically.
And I think Jim would know better than most since he's been so hands-on with the project. Other questions from the board for Jim?
Thank you.
Mr. Talbert, anything from your standpoint? I know that, uh, the commission's been, uh, asking, almost pleading for, for an open date.
We have been. It's, it's quite frustrating. You just look at the projects that have been completed since this project has started. We've gotten Granite Knolls, we've gotten Lowe's, we've gotten, hey, we got Taco Bell opening up since the last time we told them they needed to get a CFO. You know, it's, it's, it's not being managed properly. And to move forward with this group is not probably in the best interest of the town. It's, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm sad because I like the people that are there. It's just they're not getting the job done. They're not, they're being hand-fed what they need to do and it's not getting done.
Commissioner, how many open dates have we had?
I would probably four. You know, it's July 4th, Memorial Day.
There was a concert planned, right?
Concert planned.
That's the last I heard.
It's quite frustrating.
It was a pro-am or something? Remember the pro-am?
The pro-am. Yeah. You know, they, we, the opportunities have been there. They're just not moving forward. I don't understand. I've been in construction before. I, I don't understand why this is taking so long.
And I know that.
The building itself alone, it's, they've been told to stay away from things and they're still doing the same things.
And I know that you've offered your assistance. I know other commissioners, you've told me have offered their personal assistance.
Absolutely, absolutely.
One commissioner who is, I think, well versed in golf courses, I think.
Is burnt out by them.
Yeah.
And I gotta tell you, the, the Town Board, uh, Parks and Rec, I mean, everybody has, has really tried to work with, with this group. And it's unfortunate that it just, it just hasn't been reciprocated.
Yeah, I agree.
Cause I mean, I know, uh, with our conversations, we were all on board trying to get, trying to get this group to succeed.
I, I agree. I, I think we have put our best foot forward.
Yeah.
And it has not been reciprocated.
I just wanna, I just, Commissioner, I just want to pause and just, um, kind of reiterate what you just said about what has transpired in Yorktown over the last eight years.
I'm sure I've left out a few.
I'm sure of it. And that's just a start off. And then how much we've overcome with COVID and whatnot to still be in such a successful place, moving forward here in, in Yorktown. And on top of that, I just want to pause and recognize how many people have been burnt out, which was a great word to use, just because no matter what they did, they couldn't support or see any action following up on that. So just taking a minute to see where we are, put it, I mean, I can hear what you're saying, Jim, and I can hear what you said, Steve. And about as a building inspector and as a Parks and Rec, you know, supervisor, and I can understand based on your expertise. But when you did mention how many things have come to life and how Yorktown has come together to effectuate projects and support our partnerships, both on the commercial end and on our private side, such as our parks and whatnot. I, you know, it really just resonated for me. It made me like, I just, I just like, I know I've been reading the documents and I've been walking the properties, but like, for some reason, for me, it was like, it was very clear.
We hired a park superintendent that automatically became a GC of a job that had no idea how to do it. And he facilitated so many different things for them to move forward. For some time, we didn't have a park superintendent because he was too busy doing that.
That's why I told him he was being modest about his involvement.
He put a lot of effort. He, he led them down the right path. It's just, you can't always lead everyone down the right path and they'll follow.
You're a hundred percent right, Commissioner. And, and you know, there's nothing more that we wanted on this Town Board, on your board and the Parks and Recreation Department than for that place to be open and functional.
Very excited for it to be open.
Yes. And so are the residents. Many of the residents come to probably all of us at one point in time or another. And it said, hey, what's going on over there? When's that place opening? Is it going to open? We don't have an answer.
We don't have an answer.
And it's a shame that we don't have an answer.
Yes. The easiest part to, to say is, you put a crew in there, get a building done. They get the right CFOs and all that stuff. The building could open, but the golf course, who knows?
I just, I just had one more point I want to say. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez, uh, I just, one more point. Mr. Morano mentioned a, a First Amendment to the contract. Which amendment are we on presently that's valid?
There's only one amendment.
Only one amendment. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. That there is only one amendment that's been approved by the town of Yorktown. Right? Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Rodriguez.
Any arguments of the contrary is legally and factually frivolous.
I will, I'll throw one other thing out and then I'd like to make a motion on this after hearing this. Uh, we had Popeyes come up too during all of that.
I knew there was more.
And Uncle Giuseppe's moving. Yeah, quite a few. So, uh, after, after seeing the reports and seeing what was happening, uh, I worked with the attorney on a resolution. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to pass this and I'll read it in. Whereas in September 2014, the town entered into a concession agreement with RC Recreation Development LLC, otherwise known as RC, for RC to provide golf recreational facilities to the public at the town-owned park located on the south side of Route 6 at the intersection of the Teconic Parkway in Jefferson Valley, New York, in the town of Yorktown, currently known as the Valley Fields Golf Course Park. And whereas said concession agreement was amended in May 2018 and is set to expire on August 31st, 2028. And whereas RC has repeatedly provided the town with projected dates for RC to commence full operation of the golf course and restaurant collectively the park, which dates RC has repeatedly failed to meet. And whereas on July 6th, 2022, and upon inspection of the work performed by RC at the park, the town's building inspector observed numerous cold violations that necessitated the issuance of a stop work order, which was issued on that date. Whereas the deficiencies were observed at the park by the town and RC was informed of the deficiencies and violations in writing on July 12th, 2022. Whereas on September 6th, 2022, the Town Board adopted the attached resolution incorporated herein by reference, finding RC in material breach of the concession agreement due to the violations and RC's failure to, to commence full operation of the park and providing RC an opportunity to cure the material breaches, the Cure Resolution. Whereas the town conducted an inspection of the park on November 15th, 2022 and determined that RC has failed to cure the material breaches within the time provided in the Cure Resolution. Whereas a concession agreement provides that the town may, quote, may immediately terminate, end quote, the concession agreement if RC does not cure a material breach within 30 days of such written notice by the town identifying a material breach. Now therefore be it resolved, the town hereby terminates a concession agreement due to RC's failure to cure the previously noticed material breaches thereof. Whereas the concession agreement further provides that the, quote, "The town has the absolute right to terminate at will by providing written notice of such intention to terminate the license at least 60 days prior to the commensments of the golf season on April 1st each year," end quote. Whereas the town intends to terminate the concession agreement in accordance with its absolute right to do so. Now therefore be it further resolved, the town hereby alternatively terminates a concession agreement in accordance with its absolute right to do so. Now therefore be it further resolved, RC must vacate and remove all its belongings and personal property from the park by November 30th, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
Go in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Very good.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all of our town efforts. It's disappointing that we're at this point. But we do have an obligation to protect our taxpayers and protect our town. Bottom line. And it's very clear that's, needs to be done in this case. Moving on with our resolutions from the assessor, we're going to authorize a supervisor to sign a retainer agreement for appraisal services for the Jefferson Valley Mall. From our buildings and maintenance, we're going to award a bed for the furnishing and installation of heat pumps at Town Hall. And it will be awarded to GLP and Sons Inc., which is the lowest bidder. And the comptroller has authorized to process a budget transfer to the town buildings capital project for this award as detailed in the on the agenda. From the finance department, we're going to authorize a budget transfer for completion of the air conditioning system at the Albert A. Capellini Community and Cultural Center for seventy-five thousand dollars. And we're also going to authorize the comptroller to pay Joseph Lewis the cash value of unused time as of the date of his retirement. I thought we weren't going to do that because we weren't going to let him retire.
We weren't going to let him retire.
I thought so.
Do we have to do this?
I guess so.
All right.
And indeed, further resolved that the that the comptroller has authorized to transfer funds for the purpose of his payout at retirement, which is detailed in the agenda as well. We're going to authorize the comptroller to process the following budget transfer for the Town Hall entrance renovation, which, again, as Councilman Diana described, is underway. And this was originally awarded to A. DeVito and Sons, again, detailed in the agenda. We're going to authorize the comptroller to process a budget transfer for the Highway Department, transferring nine thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars from the fund balance to the capital projects for the Highway Garage Improvement for the payments to SNL Plumbing. We're going to authorize the comptroller to process a budget transfer for workers' comp indemnity payments, transferring eighty thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars from the general fund to the workers' compensation indemnity payments line. We're going to authorize the comptroller to process a budget transfer for the town board that the comptroller is authorizing, oh, excuse me, to authorize to process a budget transfer for the payment of Schmidt Excavating. This was the emergency response, the demo fire that occurred at Old Crompond Road. From the Highway Department, we're going to authorize the comptroller to release the escrow deposit for a street opening permit, zero two two zero zero five for two four four two Mill Pond Street. We're also going to authorize an increase in the cost of tree of a tree truck by amending resolution number two thirty-nine of twenty twenty-one for the Highway Department for an increase of two thousand nine hundred dollars. We're going to approve additional funds to be transferred for the purchase of various chemicals for the operation of the Yorktown Heights Water Pollution Plant. Let's see, from the Parks and Recreation Department, very happy for this one. We're going to be awarding the bid for roofing at the Parks and Recreation Department locating at Downing Park. That is, let's see here, to being awarded to Precision Roofing. And we're also going to authorize a transfer from the general fund capital contingency of forty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. We're going to authorize authorization to sign an agreement with Musco Sports Lighting for sports lighting at Downing Park Baseball Fields, which we're very excited about. This is part of our ARPA investment. We're going to authorize a budget transfer for Parks Equipment. Comptroller is going to be processing a budget transfer, let's see, of a hundred and seventy, oh, this is for the actual payments for those lights, the Musco Lights. We're going to authorize supervisors to sign the Sparkle Lake Dam Safety Annual Certification. From the Planning Department, we're going to authorize advertisement for professional consulting services for historic property structures and landscapes. As a reminder, the planning board came to the town board asking for an on-call historic expert to help them with their with their planning board processes. From the Police Department, we're going to authorize the town clerk to advertise a bid for the Police Department Unmarked Vehicle Purchase. We're also going to authorize a supervisor to sign a change order for the Police Department Boiler Replacement Capital Project to the tune of twelve thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars. And we're going to authorize the town clerk to advertise a public hearing for Homeland Towers. Are we doing, is that accurate? We're going to, we're going to, we're going to put that on hold. I don't think that's accurate. So we're going to table that. And we're also going to accept monthly reports from the Finance Department and the Town Clerk.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Rodriguez, was there anything I'm missing?
If you do the ad, I apologize, I was looking at something else. Did the ad for the stormwater management agreement?
No, I knew there was one that I was missing. Let's see. Here it is, I'll read it. In its entirety, resolved, supervisors authorized to execute a stormwater control facility maintenance agreement with New York Jefferson Valley Self-Storage LLC in connection with the project at six two one Bank Road. Can we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else there, Mr. Rodriguez? Okay, if there's no other business, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Thank you very much, Yorktown.
Good night, Yorktown.
Good night, all.